Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting on July eighteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. In the Estill County Board of Education boardroom located on two fifty-three Main Street in Hurvin, Kentucky. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and we start our meeting by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Thank you all for that. I'd like to remind everyone as you come into the boardroom, there's a sign in sheet if you'd like to sign in. Mister Brock, do we have any revisions to our agenda this evening?
We do. Under action items, uh, bullet C, I would like to remove that from the agenda. We do have a deficit under the last two projects, Estill Springs and the safety and ADA. But I want to review those numbers. Miss Helen, I talked this evening and I think that they're a little bit off. So I want to review them before we take uh, and take action on actually moving my need to cover the deficit.
Okay. Anything else? Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, um, so under our action items, first on our agenda is consideration for approval of a new board member. Would you like to discuss that, Mister Brock?
So as, um, as everyone should know by now, uh, we had a board member resign. Uh, we opened the position, uh, back in, uh, May. And, uh, took applications, posted in newspaper, had it on our website. We had one applicant, uh, they are qualified and so it is my recommendation, uh, that we appoint that, uh, person as a new board member. They would serve through the fall and then they would have to run. The applicant we had was Joe Crawford.
Okay. So, um, Mister Joe Crawford is our board member with all the appropriate, um, documentation that he submitted. So at this time, I would like to call for a vote for approval.
What do you mean a motion? A second to accept it?
See, I'm not with it this morning.
You're good.
Um, so first and a second, so Sheila makes a first, um, Tammy makes a second. So do we have any discussion? None at this time? I'd like to call for a vote now. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with a four oh vote. He's not here this evening to be sworn in so we can put that on our agenda for next meeting.
Yeah, we'll swear in at next meeting.
We'll swear him in next meeting. We'll notify him and tell him that, um, tag your it.
Yeah, as I understand it, you appoint and then the following you swear in, is that correct? Yes.
Okay. Um, so next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of a new vice chair.
So when we lost our board member that resigned, that was our vice chair and we have not appointed a new vice chair and we need to do that.
Okay. So do we have any nominations at this time to be vice chair?
Nominate Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a first and a second to nominate Carrie Smallwood to be vice chair. Um, and do we have any discussion? I think she accepts that nomination.
I do, yeah.
Okay, do we have anything further? Okay, if nothing further, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
I don't know.
Any opposed? You can vote for yourself.
Okay.
So it's a four oh vote. So Carrie Smallwood is our new vice chair of the Board of Education. Congratulations. Um, so the next on our agenda was the swearing in of the S R O chief.
The C.
The what?
Okay, yes, yeah.
Swearing in of our S R O chief.
Yeah, I'm, I'm behind, go ahead.
So is he here?
So we do have our new S R O chief here, uh, Mister Dave Friedley and our board attorney here, we have oath. And then we also have the badges have came in to appoint to him. But I think those are a little bit out of order, um, because we have to also do the, the, to reestablish the, uh, the, the, uh, Estill County School Based Law Enforcement Agency.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's in C.
Where is that at on our?
Yeah, we skipped C, or I'm sorry, I, I, it's instead of C, it should have been the revision, it's the, uh, F, E that should have been the revision, my apologies.
Okay, so I,
Your role's agenda's not lining up from the one I had earlier, it's okay.
So our revision to the agenda should have been item E.
Yeah, I called the, I called the revision correctly, the consider of the transfer of funds, but I, I had the bullet number wrong.
Okay.
It's bullet E, my apologies.
So we should be on item C on our agenda.
Yeah.
First of all, we need an, uh, we need approval. I need a motion, a first and a second to reestablish the Estill County School Based Law Enforcement Agency. And it's referred to as the S B L E A. So I need a motion to move forward with that. Have a motion from Sheila. And I have a second from Carrie. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote.
I apologize, sorry.
Okay.
That's my fault.
I'm not, I, I,
That's my fault. I missed that one up.
And, and next we have our S R O. Would you like to get to that, Mister Brock?
Yes, so now we have, since we have reestablished, devoted to reestablish our, uh, Estill County School Board Law Enforcement Agency. Uh, which was just something we had to do. Our number was still valid, but we just, we did have to reinstate it. So we do have a new S R O chief. I'll let him talk a little bit about himself. But I know he's worked for the Department of Transportation doing some trainings. He's a retired state police officer. I think worked for the Department of Justice for a little bit too. Uh, I've spent some time talking with him, Mister Cornet did. We interviewed him and we gave him the opportunity, uh, to become our new chief. He's actively recruiting and I actually have a interview slash meeting with someone tomorrow. To see if they could join our department as well. But it's Mister Dave Friedley. If you want to tell just a little bit about yourselves, anything that I left out, and then we'll, uh, move forward with the ceremony. Just so you know, I limit my principles to like two minutes, so, come on up here. You're good.
Good evening, I'm David Friedley and I'm a retired Kentucky State Trooper. I was blessed to have twenty-two years there and since then have had several, uh, occasions to work again with the Kentucky State Police. In different capacities and I'm now blessed to be with the Estill County Schools Police as your new chief. And I'm thrilled and I'm honored and I feel like that we can move forward together. And make our environment much safer and I'll be relying on everyone a lot. I've got a lot to learn. I also have a lot to share, so we'll have a fifty fifty there and I think we'll make a good team. I have prayed over it a lot and the Lord opened and closed the doors and I landed here. And so, uh, with that said, uh, it's all moving forward from here.
And we have, uh, our board attorney, uh, Mister Chinworth to, uh, do the swearing in tonight.
Do we have somebody to take the picture?
Well, we need somebody too, cause we gotta also have a badge to present to him, so.
Wait just a second, I'm gonna get the toilet first.
If you raise your right hand, be after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
That I will support the constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
The office of chief of police of the Estill County School Police Department.
The office of chief of police of the Estill County Schools Police Department.
According to law.
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present constitution.
That since the adoption of the present constitution.
I, being a citizen of this state.
I, being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state or out of it.
Nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons.
Nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge.
Nor have I acted as a second in carrying the challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God.
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending and so help me God.
Okay, so that brings us down. Congratulations and welcome to Estill County. We appreciate your service and, uh, we look forward to the opportunity of you being here to get our police force back up and running. So thank you. Um, so next on our agenda, we are down to item F, I believe.
Correct, you're right. My apologies, again.
I worked all day, so it, it's me.
No, it was me.
Um, next we have, uh, consideration for approval of a revised salary schedule.
So nothing changed on it. We went back and, uh, looked, there were a few typos and a few things that were wrong. I just wanted to make sure that we officially rent it in to the record and approve the changes that we made.
So, um, those were, um, sent to you all. Does anybody want to give a motion to move forward? I need a first and a second. Sheila Samples makes a first. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of the following handbooks and can we do those all at once?
We can, yes.
Okay, so we have our employee handbook, our substitutes handbook, our coaches. And our school handbooks and within that it's the student discipline code of acceptable behavior and discipline. South Urban Estill Springs, West Urban Middle School, High School and the Success Academy.
So every year, the policies and handbooks get updated because of new laws, new K R S. And this is just a reflection that these handbooks have been updated, uh, to coincide with those new policies and, and the new K R S.
I need a motion to approve those updates and we do this every year before school starts.
Yep.
Um, Tammy makes a motion. Do we have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Next, that brings us down to our consent items. Mister Brock, would you like to discuss those?
Those are just something obviously we do every month, the minutes from the last previous meeting, the treasurer's report and paying bills.
Uh, um, second paragraph in D.
Yep.
About the A R C. Uh, it's got twenty, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, should be two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five.
Which one is that?
The second paragraph, it's about Amanda Frye, that's the A R C.
Oh, yes, we'll correct that. So we'll, we'll approve it with corrections. Should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's the teacher in her proofreading.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Any other, anything else? Okay, so this, again, this is just, uh, where we have to approve every year. And if there is any typos or we find anything, then we'll, we can change those and, and then make the, uh, appropriate changes. And I've got that noted.
Is it okay to do those consent items as one motion or do we need to do those individual? Cause there's like A through F. Do we need to review each one of those?
I, I don't think so. We just got the, we just got the, uh, the chairperson, she found a typo. We'll have to go through that and we'll, it's, it's also something that we do every year. That's what I'm saying. Well, if we find any more typos, then we, we can revise it, so. Uh, and then the contract, which is for, uh, evaluation services and for five oh fours or, or I, or I E Ps. And then F, the annual review of the data, security best practices, so.
Yeah, I, I just have to make sure that I verbally tell you all that, uh, in case you haven't, you know, I'm sure you all have looked at it. Just to make sure, uh, to remind that we do follow, uh, security best practices. However, if for some reason we do have a data breach or something of that effect, then it is responsibility, um, of the Estill County School District to, uh, report that. Uh, and that could go as far as having costs associated with, um, data protection. Um, uh, protection of social security numbers and things like that. So we always have to remind the board that we as being good stewards of the P I, uh, you know, personally identifiable information of the district. We have to make sure that if something does happen, that we do have to respond accordingly and adjust in case there isn't a, a monetary cost to that. And take any measures for protection.
Thank you, Mister.
So we can approve all these with one motion? Okay, so I need a motion, first and a second. Sheila Samples makes a first, Carrie, um, Tambo makes a second. And do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Next is Mister Brock's report.
So the summer's rolling along. We've, uh, be back in school in just about twenty days, I think. Uh, I've got a lot of things going on. Uh, K A S A is coming up next week. We got K S B A coming up this Friday night, I believe. Uh, we have a lot of our leaders going to K A S A this year. It's a great opportunity for them to network, but also to go to sessions. And learn leadership, learn, uh, updates and stuff for testing, updates for laws. Uh, also for, uh, like climate and culture. So that's gonna be a good opportunity for them. We've got opening day, uh, coming up. As you all know, we've got our leadership retreat, which will be, uh, principals, assistant principals, district office, uh, directors. And coaches within the district where, uh, we'll work together for a full day. Uh, looking forward to this year and implementation of some thoughtful classroom strategies, P D, that we have this summer. But also expectations to continue to work from last year and then add two or three new things for this year, which would be those engagement pieces and more for our progress monitoring of data. Um, you all saw a couple of times this year where we brought our data to the board and the progress that we have made. We're adding more pieces next year so we can make more progress next year. So it's kind of a layered system. As far as staffing goes, I think we are fully staffed up today. I talked to Ms. Williams, uh, about three o'clock and they had done an interview. I think the last standing certified position was offered. We still do have some classified positions as far as custodians and I think some cooks, uh, and maybe a few other things. But the certified positions are filled. Some of those classified positions have just recently come open and we'll have to rehire those. So looking forward to another year and looking forward to making a lot of progress this, this coming year, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Um, next we have our board member forum. Does anybody have anything to share?
I would just like to say I've been enjoying how the middle school and I think the high schools too has been putting all of the staff because when my children aren't in school, some people I don't know, and I think it's great to introduce all the teachers and staff and for people to see who's going to be there.
Also, there was a post on our district webpage about our school, um, summer feed program and a lot of the people that have been involved in that is, um, a lot of work, but it's a blessed work. And so it's wonderful that we're able to offer that to our students during the summer, but I do know that it is a lot of work.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate the post that you all made, uh, about our summer feeding program.
And that's something that, um, going forward, we're going to be more mindful of. I know we do those posts from time to time, but we should have two or three posts weekly this year from different schools highlighting different things, uh, from the district level. Though the school levels will still be posting those, but the district itself, you should see four, three, four, five a week, uh, that are highlighting the things that's going on in their district and then also maybe some more in the newspaper. Uh, so we're going to be very mindful of that at least this year as well.
Now, Mr. Brock and I talked a week or so ago about perhaps looking into the possibility of getting some signage in front of the central office so that we could communicate more with the public. Individual schools have them, but everybody looks to this for communication. So we talked about getting some type of electronic signage out front. So we talked a little bit about that. Yeah, we've talked about it in the past. In the old days, and Todd may speak to this, there was, uh, I think he changed the letters or something on it maybe. Yeah.
They would go out and change the letters and shut the glass letters of all.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking.
This would be a digi, yes, I know. This would be, be digital and we, we'd have to look into it and see what it costs. Yeah.
And the flagpole is a very nice added piece in front of our central office. So we appreciate that. Maybe in the future, we'd like to add a Kentucky flag out there.
Yep.
Um, but thank you all for that. Um, Mr. Simpson, do we have any public comments? Okay. Um, at this time, I would, um, like to call for a motion and a second to go into closed session. Um, pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight ten, paragraph F, for the purpose of discussion, which may lead to an appointment, discipline or the dismissal of an individual student or employee. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second.
Need to vote to go in.
So I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Okay.